Gurnee is here and they have made their presence known. I'd like to call the order, the December 10th meeting of the Chagrin Falls Board of Education. Ashley, please take the roll.
This is Bendel.
Yes, here.
Mr. Boardner?
Here.
Mrs. Hoyt's not here yet. Mrs. Miller?
Here.
And Dr. Sabo?
Here.
All right, would you please rise and we're going to join our friends from Gurnee in saying the Pledge of Allegiance. Over here, here we go. Ready? One, two, three.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Excellent. All right, thanks guys, you guys can have a seat and we're going to call up in a minute to do your presentation. What a wonderful treat on such a dreary night. Okay, I move to approve the minutes from our 11:19, 2025 meeting, do I have a second?
Actually, we need to do adopt the agenda first.
Whoa.
Adopt the agenda first.
Do the agenda first, okay. Okay, hold on. I move to adopt the agenda from today's meeting, December 10th, 25, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Ashley?
Mrs. Bendel?
Yes.
Mr. Boardner?
Yes.
Yes.
And I move to approve the minutes from 11:19, 2025, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Ashley, whenever you're ready.
I'm documenting this. Mrs. Hoyt, right.
Yes, after parking probably five months.
Mr. Boardner?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoyt?
What am I, what am I doing?
You're voting on the minutes.
Oh, yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Dr. Sabo?
Yes.
Mrs. Bendel?
Yes. Okay, and I'm going to hand it off to the superintendent for the superintendent's report.
I just want to do one thing before we feature our Gurnee students and that is to do a recognition. So, I know that Mrs. Bendel doesn't want us to recognize her.
That's correct.
We will miss if you didn't say thank you on behalf of our students, staff, families, and community. Throughout your service on the Chagrin Falls Board of Education, you have helped the district navigate complex issues with clarity, courage, and a steady focus on what is best for students. You have approached the work with professionalism, high expectations, and a deep sense of responsibility to the community. As board president, you have played a central role in advancing a clear strategic direction and supporting high-quality learning experiences for every student. You have modeled thoughtful governance, encouraged open and respectful dialogue, and ensured that decisions remain grounded in our policies and core values. So, on behalf of the Chagrin Falls Exempt Village Schools, we just want to say thank you, Lori, for your years of dedicated service and for your unwavering commitment to the students of the Chagrin Falls District. And just so everyone knows, it's because the term has ended in January, those positions transfer, so.
Yes, this will be my last meeting.
Just so that they understand.
Thank you, it has been my absolute honor to represent the community and do this, so thank you. And to get, I should know, all of you and so many members of our community, I'm so glad you guys are here to help me send, send me off tonight. And who's introducing the?
It would be me.
Okay.
So, tonight, we're going to have a personalized learning and student agency in the classroom presentation, so I'd like to introduce Mrs. Cece.
To come forward and start the program.
Good evening, how are you? We are here tonight to feature our second grade classroom from Mrs. Arcaro's class, who is going to highlight their personalized learning experiences and their kind of reflection on what it's been like to have some voice and choice within the classroom today. And so, I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Gooden, who is our instructional coach, as well as Mrs. Arcaro, to start off their presentation for this evening.
Am I allowed to stand? With the microphone. You have to, yeah. Sorry, now I'm making.
All right, can you hear me okay? All right, good evening, everyone. My name is Sandra Gooden and I'm an instructional coach. I work primarily with pre-K to grade three teachers at Gurnee. And as an instructional coach, and there are a number of us in the district, my job is to help support and help provide professional development and really help stretch teachers as they are working to meet the goals of our district for our students. So, first, I'm so pleased to be in this role and to be able to share with you what we do. Really, ultimately, our goal is to better students' experiences and help them grow and thrive. So, I'd like to give you a little bit of a big picture, all the way down to the very narrow look at a, at specific students and how they're impacted by what the vision is of Chagrin. So, as a coach and as teachers and staff, we're really driven by our strategic plan. And one of the priority focuses of that strategic plan, which I'm not sure everyone can see, but I'll read it to you, is high-quality learning experiences. And this, the strategy for this is to create and adopt instructional frameworks that prioritize authentic academic experiences and increase students' agency over their learning. So, that's the big-picture driver, that's where I'm going as a coach, that's where staff is going, that's where we want to be. And so, what we have done over the last three to four years is really explore personalized learning. And we have found that is the perfect fit for this focus area, because we're really are, we really are nurturing and developing agency. So, big picture, we want kids engaged. Little bit smaller picture, we have coaches, we have staff who are spending time in trainings, we're spending time with teachers. We have Jake Miller, who's our personalized learning coach, spending a lot of time going from this big idea to more practical professional development, and I have the opportunity to be in classrooms, which is leading me to our narrowing a little bit more, which is where I get to work with teachers in the classroom. And so, I've been working with Mrs. Arcaro, we've done some professional development together, and she really took this and ran with it. So, I'm going to turn it over to her. You'll get the, now the staff, teacher perspective, but then ultimately, you are going to see this particular focus area, literally, what does it look like in a classroom? And I think you will be very impressed.
Good evening and thank you for the opportunity to share what's happening in our second-grade classroom. One of our biggest focuses this year, like Sandra was saying, has been student agency, helping students take ownership of their learning and understand that their choices, voices, and ideas matter. Since partner participating in the professional development of personalized learning, Sandra and I have partnered to make this classroom a place where students are empowered to take control of their own learning. In our classroom, students make meaningful decisions every day. They set individual goals in not only academic areas, but goals that go far beyond the classroom. One of our main focuses through student ages, agency, is the ability to become a reflective learner, which is one of the most powerful habits someone can build. Reflecting allows you to learn from experiences, build self-awareness, improve problem-solving and decision-making, strengthen responsibility and ownership, and build resilience. This year, when I moved to second grade, I had so much to learn. I got to the first day of school and realized I didn't actually know how morning meetings should be run. I decided to turn this into a student task. Soon, our morning meeting was running smoothly and students were the ones actually running it. I quickly learned that second graders were more capable than I ever gave them credit for. I realized that they could take, take control of their own learning and be a partner alongside of me in teaching themselves. Some of the things that have been implemented in the classroom to give students control of their learning and have ownership in their classroom are classroom jobs. Students have jobs every day and help keep our classroom running smoothly. The students actually decided these were important jobs themselves. Students are also in charge of running morning and closing meetings. We have students giving other students positive feedback by a student-led special caddy and a special sticker every day. Every day at closing meeting, they take turns celebrating a classmate they personally think did well that day. They have the ability to pick their own partners during classwork or work independently. They are able to choose where they learn through flexible seating and choose if they need a fidget or if they don't need one. They are reflecting on their focus each lesson and deciding what can help them become more engaged. Students also have the ability to learn something new on their own that interests them and give a lesson to the class about it. We call this a "you teach," where students become the teachers and a skill they would like to share with their peers. Just last week, Holden and Sloan taught us about Hanukkah. We all learned how to play dreidel and learned the history of Hanukkah. By giving students agency, we are teaching them skills that reach far beyond second grade, confidence, independence, and the ability to advocate for themselves. Our classroom is a place where students feel safe to take risks, make mistakes, and learn from them. And that ownership has transformed the way they approach learning each day. Now, I would like to give some of our students the chance to share a little bit more about what they do. You will hear about the continuum of engagement from Sloan and Miller, helpful fidgets from Etta, partner work from Max, and reflection from Holden.
We'll have you guys stand right here, okay?
Hi, my name is Holden. In our classroom, we do a lot of reflection and goal-creating. Reflecting is when you look back on something you did and think about if you could do it better next time. We reflect on our partner work, fidgets, and our show what you know. We reflect by writing in our response journals. One reflection I wrote was about our foundation show what you know. It felt really easy to me, so I started drawing on my test. When Mr. Arcaro gave our test back, I, I noticed I hadn't completed all the questions. I reflected and I decided that I shouldn't draw on my tests before I am done with the full test. I made a goal for my next test, for my next foundation's test, to not draw before double-checking my work. On the next foundation show what you know, I did not draw and I did very well.
Hi, my name is Etta. In our classroom, we were able to choose if we use a fidget and what fidget we use. We are responsible to determine if the fidget is helpful or hurtful to our learning. We determine this by reflecting on our fidget that we used that day. A helpful fidget looks like my eyes on the speaker, speaker, and fidget and hands, and my body is calm. A hurtful fidget looks like my eyes on the fidget and playing with it. A fidget that was hurtful for my turning, for my learning, was the fidget spinner. I was not able to pay attention to the speaker while using this fidget. A fidget that I found helpful to me was the stone, because I could feel it and my, and keep my eyes on the speaker. I also found that, that not using a fidget was helpful to me, because I could pay more attention with that one.
Hi, my name is Max. In our classroom, we were able to pick our own partners. We can choose to work on our own or with partners. I like to work with a partner, but sometimes I like to work on my own. Before picking partners, I made, I made a goal to finish all my work. The partner I work well with is a friend in my classroom. I work well with him, because we are able to get a lot of work on when we work together. We stay on task while we are together. I do not work well with some friends in our classroom, because I can't, can't stay focused to get my work done. I know it's because we reflect after our partner work. I noticed I did not reach my goal with these partners. My goal for partner work is to be able to finish my work. I know from trying different partners who I can finish my work with. The partner I like to choose has the same goal as me to finish the work.
Hi, my name is Miller.
And my name is Sloan. This is a scale of where I'm at while learning. It is called the engagement scale. We check this scale at the beginning, middle, and end of a lesson. The scale shows four levels of engagement. The first level is disrupting. Disrupting means being off-task and arguing with others. The second level is avoiding. Avoiding means separating from the group and distracting others.
The third level is when you are, wait, the third level of the scale is participating. Participating is when you are answering questions and actively, and actively listening. Active listening is when you are giving connections and nodding your head and showing the speaker you are listening. The fourth level is called driving. Driving is when you are setting goals and seeking feedback.
I was at driving when I was working during rotations. I was working in Mrs. Arcaro's group and we didn't know how to pronounce a Spanish name. The next day during rotations, I was doing independent work and I made a goal to learn how to pronounce the Spanish name. I went on my Chromebook and listened to the book read aloud. I made a goal and learned how to pronounce the name.
I was driving, I was driving before the neurotic test. My goal was to answer at least 10 questions. I, I went over my goal and answered 19 questions.
Oh my gosh, you guys, that was so good. Mrs. Cece was right, that was very, very impressive.
There are some adults that could use, yeah, could use that same level of, of skill-building and reflection.
Totally agree. Guys, can I ask you a question? So, I heard a lot of themes that came up in everything that you shared with us, so thank you so much for that. What does it feel like to you guys, and any of you can answer, but what does it feel like to you guys when you're able to have that much choice throughout your day, right? Between the fidgets or the way that you want to learn or how you're reflecting? How does that make you feel? Yeah, go ahead. It's good? Yeah. I like feeling good, right? Because learning should feel good. And, and having that choice, does it make it feel empowering, right? That's a big word, but.
Like you have control over what's going on in your classroom?
Yeah. That's awesome, right? I like that for you. I want, I want that.
So, can I ask the parents a question? We have a number of parents here tonight, I mean, you can't see them on the screen. So, have any of you noticed any of these things bleeding over into sibling relationships and things at home and excitement about going to school? Can you, can you see a difference from when we began this last year and what you're seeing now?
I know in our house it seems like they're excited to go back to school.
That's great.
Love that.
That's great.
When, when we're on break, or we, like when we had Thanksgiving break, Miller was like, when are we going to go back to school?
That's great.
And she, she bothers her brother around, she's like, I don't have to do all this, here, here. I've already done that.
I can reflect that this is the right way to do this.
But does she use the continuum of engagement at home on her brother? Because I would love that integration of language between the siblings.
That's great. Well, thank you guys so much for coming out on this cold night. Does anybody else have any other questions?
We're just so proud of you all. You spoke so well.
I know, it's, you know. Yeah, it was really great. And we, of course, would love to have you stay and watch, but we know that it's cold and that people probably have other things to do, so we'll take a quick break. And if anybody wants to leave, that's totally fine.
And we need to do a picture. Students with the board somewhere that looks decent.
Great.
Please drive safe too. Yeah, slow, slow as it.
Thank you. Second part of the superintendent's report is that we have to do compliance with Senate Bill 210, which are the nutrition standards, which just is basically a requirement that I need to present the food service report, which was given to all of you. And then I read the statement and then we can check the policy box that we've fulfilled our requirements.
Great. We don't have to vote on that, correct?
No, no vote. I just need to read this. Senate Bill 210 and USDA's Smart Snacks requirements dictate that snacks and beverages sold to students during the regular school day meet nutrition guidelines for total fat, saturated fat, calories, and sugar for school year 24-25. These nutrition guidelines also apply to the sale of food and beverages that are sold during the school day for fundraising purposes. The Chagrin Falls Exempt Village School District Food Service Department and vending operations are compliant with this rule as all of the snacks and beverages sold to students during regular school day meet Senate Bill 210's nutrition requirement or federal Smart Snacks requirement, whichever is more restrictive.
There is a treasures report section on the agenda. I don't have a formalized report, but I do want to inform the board that the items that have passed, the House and the Senate have been presented to the governor. They were presented to him yesterday. So, that means he has 10 days, not counting Sundays, to sign or veto those. So, the 20th would be the last day. That's Saturday that he can sign or veto. If that day passes and there's no action, then by default, they all become law. So, if you are so inclined, I have information. I have contacts. I can give you the link to the form to contact the governor's office. So, that's out there and just wanted you all to be aware of it. Thank you. I can, yeah. So, the four that were presented were House Bill 335, 186, 309, and 129. The two that are the most important that are directly, would directly impact Chagrin are 309. That's the one that gives the county budget commission total authority to make any decision they want on collecting our taxes. So, regardless of what our voters would approve as far as millage, the county commissioners would have the authority to determine those taxes unnecessary or excessive and just not collect them. The other one is 335. That's the one that caps inside millage. So, it caps the growth and ties it to the GDP inflator. So, in years where property values increase more than the GDP inflator, that would be a loss to, to Chagrin. We would not receive the growth on that revenue. The other two don't directly affect Chagrin, 186 and 129, but they affect schools in general, public schools throughout Ohio. 186 limits growth for districts that are at the 20 mil floor. So, I think we've talked about this a couple times. Those districts would not actually receive growth that is proportional to the valuation increases like they do right now. And then 129 is, different types of levies are not allowed, none of the types that we currently use. So, it wouldn't directly affect us. But a lot of those items are no longer allowed and there, there's a lot in that one, none of which directly affects us, but is still not great for public schools in Ohio, so...
But the first two especially.
The first two especially, 309 and 335. If anybody wants any more detail, there are, I have details out on the treasures page of the website. You can also email me. I have some kind of points that I've put together, a summary for a few people who've asked. So, I have all that if you're interested.
And we had Tiger Forum today, which is our support organization heads when we get together and Ashley presented. And then I will tell you, please contact her if you are wanting to send letters because she created this really nice document for how to format that letter and what it should look like. So, I really appreciated her doing that for the Tiger Forum group. So, they're going to push that out to people in their groups that ask for help as well.
Great, thank you.
That 309 bill, is it different than the one that they had originally where it was based on the general fund percentage? Is this just a blanket?
For...
Collecting property taxes or...
Are you talking about the balance issue?
Right.
Yeah, that's totally different.
Is it tied to the balance?
No. That is still out there and they have until the end of the assembly to, to push that through if they would like.
I think I saw that Lake County came out and said they were not going to hold anything back. Has there been any word from Cuyahoga County or...
So, you're talking about the piggybacking issue. That is a different issue. I've not heard anything.
Okay. And just so everybody knows, what Cuyahoga is, our controlling authority and then that is...
Yes, yeah, we have property in Cuyahoga and Geogah. We do, Geogah does collect taxes for us for those properties that are in Cuyahoga County. But our budget, our tax budget, our resolutions and all those decisions and things go to Cuyahoga. So, Cuyahoga would be making those decisions.
Okay.
And to, to clarify, when you mentioned in 335 that that caps the growth of inside millage, that's one of the few time, like the few funds that is not...
Right, so...
What's the word I'm thinking of? Manipulated by House Bill 920. So, that's...
Right, so what, yeah. So, when I talk about 920 and I talk about our revenue cannot increase with property values.
Right.
I'm talking about all of the voted millage.
Right.
So, the inside millage is the unvoted millage. That's a, it's a very small portion, but it is the only place that we see growth. It's not a lot, which you'll notice, you know, if you're, if you're looking at the column charts that we put together for revenue, you know, you, you see slight increases there. We do know that those are coming. We do count on that and we forecast for it. It's not significant growth, but it is the only place that we do see a little bit of growth there.
Understood, thank you.
Anything else? We got, okay. Next up is public participation. It doesn't look like we have anybody here. Do we have anybody signed up for public participation?
Jared?
We're going to just double check.
Jared, what would you like to say?
Whatever you'd like.
Just to be safe, Mike is checking.
How does having choice and agency in your learning make you feel?
It makes me feel like I was...
Good.
Okay, next up is our consent agenda. I move to approve items 5.01 through...
5.09?
Nine.
5.09. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
So, before the vote, because we haven't had consent for a while, these are things that are reoccurring in the district. So, that's why those contracts are there. There's not roll call for each individual item. So, just to be aware.
Perfect. Ashen, do you want to?
Mrs. Hoy?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Dr. Sabo?
Yes.
Mrs. Bendel?
Yes.
Mr. Boardner?
Yes.
Okay, next up are superintendent recommendations. I move to approve item 6.01, which is a motion to approve the following policies as revised and rescinded as presented. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
So, with regard to our policy approval, these are recommendations either based on housekeeping, things that might need to be just slightly edited, to laws that are in place that require a change in policy. And then sometimes policies are replaced. So, you'll see, which is a little different on this one, where you'll see that some are actually being rescinded. It's just to make sure that everything is clean and that it's aligned and that it follows.
And I think it's pretty typical to have a big bunch of policies at the last meeting of the year because a number of things have to be approved by the beginning of the year, the calendar year.
Absolutely. And we had a great call with Niola just this week. And we will be getting those guidelines up on the website soon. So, as we promised, we were working really hard to get those done in December and so to make sure everything was finalized and aligned. And so, we're going to work with them and hopefully we'll see those go live as well. So, remember that when we approve a policy at a board meeting, then we submit to Niola. So, there may be slight lag in it being updated. And so, if you're looking for one of these specific policies, they're obviously linked to the agenda where you can grab them. But it usually takes even up to a month for them to actually be published on the website because some people have questions about why we approved a new one and they'll need it tomorrow and that one might not be up yet. But we have access and it's approved.
Right, perfect. Okay, Ashley?
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Dr. Sabo?
Yes.
Mrs. Bendel?
Yes.
Mr. Boardner?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoy?
Yes.
I move to approve item 6.02, which is a motion to approve staff resignations as presented. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Ashen?
Dr. Sabo?
Yes.
Mrs. Bendel?
Yes.
Mr. Boardner?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoy?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
I move to approve item 6.03, which is a motion to approve the certified teacher contracts contingent upon meeting all requirements as presented. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Mrs. Bendel?
Yes.
Mr. Boardner?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoy?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Dr. Sabo?
Yes.
I move to approve item 6.04, which is a motion to approve the employment of Amy Pearson, student enrichment coordinator, effective January 20th, 2026, contingent upon meeting all requirements. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
That's before Deb leaves, right? So, there's some overlap?
So, the 20th is when she, her contract, where, when she resigned, where it ends. The next motion is for those transition hours between the two. I just want to say that this was one of those really unique experiences that we had some very highly qualified candidates. And I know the team worked really hard to see, find a person that had a vision for what we can continue to do with community ed. And I think that Jared was involved in those and very happy with Amy coming on board and that opportunity in your next motion to be able to allow her to work with Dubs.
So, we need a roll call on that and we'll go to the next one.
Yeah, let's do your acting currently on the employment. Mr. Boardner?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoy?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Dr. Sabo?
Yes.
Mrs. Bendel?
Yes.
Okay, and then item 6.05 is a motion to approve Amy Pearson, a student enrichment coordinator for up to 40 transitional hours between December 11th and January 19th, contingent upon meeting all requirements. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Mrs. Hoy?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Dr. Sabo?
Yes.
Mrs. Bendel?
Yes.
Mr. Boardner?
Yes.
I move to approve item 6.06, which is a motion to approve the certified teacher contracts contingent upon meeting all requirements. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Dr. Sabo?
Yes.
Mrs. Bendel?
Yes.
Mr. Boardner?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoy?
Yes.
I move to approve item 6.07, which is a motion to approve the following certified staff for additional hours as presented. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Ashen?
Dr. Sabo?
Yes.
Mrs. Bendel?
Yes.
Mr. Boardner?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoy?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
I move to approve item 6.08, which is a motion to approve the following substitute teachers on an as-needed basis, contingent on meeting all requirements. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I'll just say one thing. We're so grateful for people that are willing to substitute in our district. And if anyone is interested, there's information on the website. We can always use more substitute teachers. And the difference, just to clarify, on the day-to-day subs versus a building sub, a building sub are positions where we employ the person for the entire year. And that way, they're here every day. They know our district. They know our kids. They know the classrooms. And so, when we have an absence, they're the ones that fill those absences first. And then once the building subs are assigned, then we go to our day-to-day subs. So, we're always looking to increase those lists.
Wonderful, thank you. Ashen?
Mrs. Bendel?
Yes.
Mr. Boardner?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoy?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Dr. Sabo?
Yes.
Item 6.09 is a motion to approve the following classified substitutes on an as-needed basis, contingent upon meeting all requirements. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Jennifer, can you explain what the differences between 6.09 and 6.08 in case people have a question?
Sure. So, 6.08 is certified personnel. So, you can think of that as a teaching position. So, the teacher in a room, a class, sorry, a classified position could be anything from an educational aide to what would be like a food service, a custodian, and they'll be designated, maybe an admin assistant for a building. So, there's lots of opportunities for classified. So, think of classified as your operational and somewhat is how I kind of differentiate the two groups.
Perfect, thank you. Ashen?
Mr. Boardner?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoy?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Dr. Sabo?
Yes.
Mrs. Bendel?
Yes.
I make a motion to approve item 6.10, which is a motion to approve the following supplemental service co-curricular contracts for the 2025-2026 school year, contingent upon meeting all requirements. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
So, just a note on this too, because we're kind of cleaning up process, is many times when we approve the student enrichment program, which we did last meeting, we would just roll and approve the person to do the enrichment club, if you will. So, this process allows us then to approve the enrichment and then next month, approve the person, if that makes sense, so that we have the time to make sure that everything's in place before that position is approved. So, this club was what was approved as student enrichment last month. Mrs. Hoy?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Dr. Sabo?
Yes.
Mrs. Bendel?
Yes.
Mr. Boardner?
Yes.
Item 6.10 is a motion, I move to approve item 6.1, 6.11, excuse me, a motion to approve the following payments for community education programming as presented. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Dr. Sabo?
Yes.
Mrs. Bendel?
Yes.
Mr. Boardner?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoy?
Yes.
I didn't miss one there, did I, Ashley? I did six.
No, you're good.
Okay. Item 6.12, this is an athletic supplemental co-curricular contract. This is a motion to approve the presented athletic supplemental and service co-curricular contracts for the spring season of 2025-2026, upon, contingent upon candidates meeting all requirements. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Dr. Sabo?
Yes.
Mrs. Bendel?
Yes.
Mr. Boardner?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoy?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Item 6.13, this is a motion to approve the following, the following volunteers contingent upon meeting all requirements. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Ashen?
Mrs. Bendel?
Yes.
Mr. Boardner?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoy?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Dr. Sabo?
Yes.
I move to approve item 6.14, which is a TDA proposal for the 2026 paving program. This is a motion to approve TDA proposal, paving and concrete work in 2026 as presented. Do I have a second?
I will second.
So, just a note on these, these are also all attached to the agenda, so you can pull them up and read. But Mr. Wolfter does a really nice job to make sure that everything is in place so that it can happen on time and on schedule. And what you're going to see next month will be, he'll present the facility improvement plan, which we have not approved for, I think, at least two years. So, he'll bring that in because we just had our facility committee and worked through all of that. So, some of this will be reflected in that as summer work or whenever it falls. So, just on these next couple ones, they've been through that committee meeting and also they're available if you just click the links online.
Great. And this is, there's always that blitz in the run-up to summer to get these contracts approved. So, that all that work can occur in that short summer window.
The documents are really well put together, really extensive. And I know I really appreciated the, the amount of detail that were in each of them, but they were easy to follow, I feel like.
Yeah, the standardization is great. Okay, so, Ashen, you want to take the role on that one?
Mr. Boardner?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoy?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Dr. Sabo?
Yes.
Mrs. Bendel?
Yes.
I move to approve item 6.15, which is a TDA proposal for roofing services in 2026 as presented. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Mrs. Hoy?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Dr. Sabo?
Yes.
Mrs. Bendel?
Yes.
Mr. Boardner?
Yes.
I move to approve item 6.16, which is an approval to approve the TDA proposal for wall study as presented. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Ashen?
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Dr. Sabo?
Yes.
Mrs. Bendel?
Yes.
Mr. Boardner?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoy?
Yes.
I move to approve item 6.17, which is a contract with Chagrin Valley Recreation Center. This is a motion to approve the lease amendment and agreement with Chagrin Valley Rec Center as presented. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
So, just a quick note on this one. We have, if you're not aware, an agreement with Chagrin Valley Rec Center to use the facilities, kind of make it their own. And sometimes a situation will come up that's not very clear in the lease because it could be a unique situation. And so, when those things happen, we work with our legal as well as them to come up with what amendment, if any, would need to be made to the initial agreement. And so, that's just the clarification so that both parties are on the same page. That's what you're approving.
Ashen?
Dr. Sabo?
Yes.
Mrs. Bendel?
Yes.
Mr. Boardner?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoy?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Next up are treasury recommendations. Ashen, you want to?
Uh, yeah, there's only one item, 7.01, Resolution 25-027. This is authorizing me to request to participate in the tax advances from the Cuyahoga County. This is just so that we can get advances as they start to collect our taxes rather than just getting the one final settlement. Recommending approval.
I move to approve item 7.01. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay.